Pardon.
To the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the repeating just as it is.
May I show that all members are present except for Don? Um, we now are opening up for review and comment, public comment. Do we have anyone wanting to comment on the review and comment? Hearing none, we will move on to citizen comments. We have citizen comment, uh Nancy, Nancy Jones.
Yeah.
You can stand up and take a step forward if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
No, we don't have a podium or anything. Just don't let me in the picture.
If you want, you can stand right in the middle. You're fine there.
Oh, I'm Nancy Jones. I wanted to respond to the article that was in the Union Times on September sixteenth, I believe it was, titled Princeton School Board Talks Return to School. And I want to comment specifically on masking as it relates to that article. And first of all, I want to commend the board members and thank you personally for supporting um and being vocal in your support for parents who choose not to mask. Um, I read, I do read actually the school board minutes or any articles related to the school board all the time. So I'm supportive of the district in that way. And I just wanted to mention the things that I found um very encouraging, supportive by board members. One said that the decision should be left up to the parents as to what they consider is safe for their children. And another member said, um, I question what gives the board the power to make that decision for parents? And then another person said, I'm okay with parents making that choice. And then I'd like to just address the board members um who had concerns regarding safety. Um, there is zero evidence to show that children are at a significant risk of catching or dying from the Chinese coronavirus. In fact, children who drive to school are at a much larger risk of dying on their way to school than dying of COVID nineteen. And that is according to the CDC. And I'm sure you know what that is. The CDC research says that the following, children ages five to fourteen years old have a point two percent chance of dying from COVID. And from all the other deaths, suicide is one point five, homicide point seven, cardiovascular disease is point six. Drowning is point five, flu and pneumonia is point three. COVID and suffocation come in the lowest at point two. We know what masking does to children. This has a serious mental health toll on young people. The inability to communicate, the inability to hear what teachers are saying. In fact, masking makes people unfamiliar with each other, less likely to empathize with a person. I believe God gave us a face for a reason. There is a study of over forty-eight thousand children, and I do have the resource for this um under the age of eighteen that were reported to have COVID between April and August of last year, two thousand twenty. When the doctor was asked how many children die, his um quote response was a mortality rate of zero. That was among children without a pre-existing medical condition such as leukemia. So why all this mask craziness? There was a twenty-two point three percent spike in ER trips for potential suicides by children ages twelve to seventeen in the summer of twenty twenty compared to uh twenty nineteen. These findings are according to the CDC again, published by the morbidity and mortality weekly report. We know there is a direct link between children not being able to empathize with their peers and their parents and mental health issues. Three of my four children graduated from Princeton High School. I have great things to say about Princeton High School, just don't have the time tonight. But what I do want you to know is I'm a retired special education teacher. And I have subbed frequently in this district for special education and know many of my students quite well. It was really fun to return on Friday with all masks and go, oh, you are back, you're here. They remembered me. I don't want to be told to mask, and I really, really am pleading with you to respect the choice of parents. I believe their constitutional right to make that choice for their children. I don't really have a whole lot more to say, except that I am concerned recently, the National School Board issued a letter to the administration, um the Biden administration regarding their concern about parents attending school board meetings. Perhaps some of you have read that, and they're throwing out terms like uh parents attending meetings are being um domestic terrorists. So I will return at a later date to talk a little bit more about that and a parent's right. Although I've never had a reason to be concerned about that here, to the way their opinion is we heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we'll go on board member committee reports. Uh, we'll start with Chad.
I had a finance meeting before this, and that was about it.
All right.
Um, I had agenda planning and I did attend um a referendum communications meeting last Thursday and then finance before this.
Eric?
Uh, I had a finance committee meeting before this.
Um, I had agenda planning. I was on a vote, yes, kind of combo meeting um last Tuesday or Monday or something for a Zoom Zoom meeting and that was it. Sue?
Uh, last Friday I had a C general membership meeting. We were in person, which was um refreshing again to be able to network with other school board members and superintendents and um two speakers um the weatherman, uh Morris Leatherman survey, and she just sent that video to me today. I don't know if she sent that to everyone. To all forward that to all of you. Um, I know I've been my comment on that more. The survey that they did was done in early August, so it really didn't reflect so much the opinions as parents were and community members are waiting to see where things will go towards the end of August. So I it I didn't think it was quite maybe as informative, um but it's certainly worth a look and I'll send that to you. And then um a representative of Tina Smith, and she just talked about Tina's um agendas. And expect, but that'll be in there as well. If you're interested, you could watch both of those presentations.
Thank you.
Jim, uh no meetings in the last two weeks, but I've been talking to some seniors. And there's a a lot of confusion about uh the vote for the community uh field house. Uh, the ones I talked to didn't think they had to vote yes on the first one. They could just hopefully have yes on the second one. So so it seems we're gonna have to do some communicating.
All right. Yeah. Definitely has to communicate.
Yes, yeah, yeah. In fact, some were totally surprised that they had to vote yes on that first one.
Have they voted yet, you know?
No.
Because I'm pretty sure when you give your ballot, it's worded that way.
Okay, well, just in case, it's, we should have a heads up on that.
Agreed.
Okay. Jim? You, can I ask Jim a question?
Yeah.
So I mean, just some advice. I mean, we've with with the communication with all stakeholders, you know, we have are trying every possible way to communicate. Um, we've had articles in the newspaper quite frequently. Our social media is very robust. Um, our website is um just a tremendous amount of information in there. Um, and we did send just recently a mailer out, and that mailer should be hitting uh inboxes. What we know is that everybody digests their information in different ways. And I have heard that there is, you know, a segment of our population that, you know, isn't isn't on any social media, doesn't look at our website, doesn't subscribe to the newspaper um and and has, you know, requested more mailers.
Yeah.
And that's something that it's an interesting dynamic because, you know, you 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 hear from one uh demographic that that's how they get their information. And then you hear from many demographics, you know, that say the opposite of that. So that's something that, you know, we will have to really think about is um, you know, the segment of our population that that really are gonna get it through the mailer. And we have and and we have lots of open public meetings. Um, and we really have a difficult time having anyone attend those, and we tried those at different times. So we're still looking for the answer of how to get all the information out, you know, to everyone. And like, I can speak like for our our parent population. You know, maybe we communicate too much because they're getting, you know, newsletters from their teachers, newsletters from their principal newsletters, you know, and and I, you know, people, I think time and the ability to digest all that information is difficult too. So we're gonna continue to strive to get, you know, information out to everybody, and we still do have time.
See, I I'm willing to go, uh if you'd like to go along, uh senior community living in the old junior high.
Yeah.
You know, I think setting up a meeting there would be a good idea.
That's in the works.
Pardon?
That's in the works.
Oh, it is? Okay.
These time records are whatever you have. That's the senior dining center that he's talking about.
Senior dining center, but it do all of the residents attend senior dining?
Not that I know of.
Yeah.
I don't quite if you do.
Uh, that's okay. Okay, so maybe, you know, I mean, anytime we can get brokered, a way to to have an entry point to communicate with different people. I mean, we really value that and appreciate that. We just want people to be informed of.
Right.
Back for information.
Yeah. I make the mailers. All right. Uh, move on to the student council report. We have Dylan representing student council.
All right, so things are looking pretty good at student council. We're just making some finishing touches on what we're doing for homecoming. Uh, plans for the dances going well. Um, we're putting together a committee to communicate with Mr. Barton better. That's about it. For the day to go.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Uh, superintendent report.
Uh, well, I'm glad you mentioned homecoming. I'm glad that you you mentioned this guy's trying to get me, you know, connected with the students at the high school so I can hear their voice. I'm really excited about that. I had a that was really going well prior to our time off, and then that kind of dwindled out. Now we're trying to get that up up and rolling again, so that's good. Yeah, lots of the festivities at homecoming. And what's neat is all of our sites celebrate homecoming, not just the high school. So lots of really cool things happening that uh pre-K, you know, all the way through middle school. Um, want to let the board know that we're continuing on with our planning to be the first school district in the state of Minnesota to implement the research-based teen uh mental health first aid. And we're excited to move that forward. All of our staff have been uh trained uh in that this summer. And now our students will be going through a series of trainings um at the school. And uh we're excited to to see that work.
What is the name of that? Is there a name?
It's called Teen Mental Health First Aid.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's a research-based uh program. I mean, the best way to give you an example of it is if you go through first aid and CPR, you know, training, and then you go through the different trainings, and you get a certificate that said that you're certified in that. And it's a lot of it's just to, uh, you know, be able to identify signs and symptoms in yourself and your friends, you know, and how you can be there to support each other. And there's there's an extensive curriculum there, so uh continuing on with our commitment to a positive climate and culture, social emotional learning as a building to create a foundation for our student learning, our curriculum instruction. Um, you know, we, there's so many different parts of what we do. Like, I would just want to mention today, uh, we did a lot of work on our reunification plan in the case that we do have some kind of a crisis and that in which we need to evacuate, and we can make sure that all of our students are safe and accountable. So all of that work, you know, continues that we would do prior to the pandemic. We continue to do that work while um, you know, continuing to work on. I have a lot of our students and staff are all sick right now, and we do have that that dashboard that we try and keep that up to date so that our families can see, uh, and we're trying to be transparent with that. You know, we have a pretty robust system, but it's all manual, and there's lots of moving parts and pieces to try and keep track of that. And uh, you know, we serve a large population of, you know, students and parents, uh, close to thirty-five hundred students, all of which have parents and all have different beliefs. And we just try and do the best that we can and be transparent with what's happening. You know, and and there's some tweaks in our uh planning that that we continue uh to have to implement because we've learned a lot of things in this first, has it been four weeks of school?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, to me, that's pretty, pretty amazing that that we're in the four weeks of school and and uh, you know, there's a lot of pretty cool, amazing learning experiences happening. Uh, but you know, there's uh distractions that we have to deal with that we haven't had to before, which is, you know, keeps us definitely on our toes. So I'll uh keep the board brief on, you know, our matrices and how uh, you know, we think we need to make some of those tweaks as we go. And I will speak later on in the agenda specifically about the referendum, if you guys have any additional questions related to that. So I'll end my remarks.
All right, so you have any questions for Ben? All right, let's move on to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? So, also made by Jim, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Sue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. Uh, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So.
My second.
Motion made by Deb, seconded by Chad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Consent agenda is there. Um, we don't have a chance to review that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Eric Minks. Is there a second?
My second.
Seconded by Chad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Uh, move on to the information portion, referendum update. Ben?
Well, you know, I I continue to to send the board updates on different subgroups of folks that I have an opportunity to go and and visit with, and we're continuing to broker additional uh meetings. As I mentioned before, the kinds of meetings that we uh publicize and open for people to come in. We we don't have as much luck with that. As a matter of fact, I had a coffee and conversation this morning. And this, and I've been doing those now for four years. This is the first time no one's ever shown up. So that was kind of a bummer, but um you know, I have, we have publicized that that was more limited to discussion on the referendum. I I think that my my future ones here are gonna be just opened up to to families on any any potential topic, and people come in with different uh things that they'd like to discuss. So uh, we'll continue on it with that. But we have, we have had good lucks when we've been invited in to speak in other venues. Um, I I am also uh working to try and speak at the Princeton Township Meeting, which actually will be next time we meet as a board. And if that happens, I may have to uh scoot out of here at some point in time in the meeting so I could make make that meeting. I just wanted to prep you for that.
Bring the security guard.
I've never been to one of those meetings.
Good luck.
Okay. Okay.
May divorce me with you.
But now you're making me nervous for the next two weeks. Come on. Well, maybe we need to ask some of these school board members to come with me.
I'll go.
Good, come on.
Um, that is intimidating.
Yeah, I'm real intimidating.
Um.
That's right.
I mean, so I mean, you know, we we are constantly making new videos, you know, some of some have been professionally done, and we're doing more and more that are more amateur. Um, and you know, in response to the to the community centerpiece. Okay, I encourage you to please check out social media today. We we released uh the second video of me going through another school district's community center.
This is on the.
This is on the like video, and I was able to kind of share with the community, you know, what what it looks like, how seniors are are coming in. There's a place for them to congregate. There's meeting rooms that are free to the public to use, for nonprofits to use. People lacing up their shoes, going out walking free on the the indoor tracks, you know, especially useful uh for people to be active um in in the really cold months where it's difficult to get outside, especially, you know, it's icy and things. Um, but also sure, you know, the the other amenities, you know, and the the cardio center and the the weights and the pool and some of those things. So um, so we're constantly trying to produce more videos like that. And and you know, I I know that there's, I know that not everybody says, a lot of people say, why I don't do social media? Well, we have about six thousand followers on our on our Facebook page. You know, maybe five, maybe five thousand. It's a lot of people. Hey, so I mean, it gets out to a lot of folks and it gets shared, and it goes to different, you know, places. Uh, we're gonna be doing a Facebook Live event that's gonna be scheduled for next week, so that will be a new little thing that we're gonna try. Um, where I'll be live, and people can can, you know, ask questions and comments. And uh, you know, we'll try and I'll have a little moderator with me to help me field questions.
Where are you gonna be?
Decided yet.
About being at the high school?
Yeah, maybe.
Do it from the stairwell.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so you know, we're we're, we have the early voting open. Um, and just so everybody knows, there's a difference with the early voting in in the um language that you use. Like, right now, it's it's absentee ballot early voting. You know, so someone comes in, they'd have to fill out an absentee ballot, and then they get their ballot, and then they can vote. A week prior to the actual election, that's just called early voting. So you can come in, you show your ID, right? There's a requirement there. You don't have to.
They have all the same all the way to the end.
Oh, do they with absentee ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, thanks for correcting me. And and then and then when the referendum uh date comes on November second, then that would be at all of the different uh, you know, voting locations across the districts. You know, I don't know what other questions you have. I mean, we're gonna continue to drip out articles into the Union Times. We're gonna continue to try and talk to as many people as we can. People have asked about the mailer, you know, the the mailer should be in people's, you know, inboxes.
Do you remember a couple of years ago, we talked about a student-produced video?
Yep, and and those are, I think, being worked on right now.
Okay, yeah.
Because we do have students' social media interns, so that's being worked on as well. I mean, well, it really depends on who comes to vote, right? And I will tell you, I continue that the the we get a lot of feedback. We have gotten a lot of feedback over the years from parents of children who have some grievances with some of our facilities. Right? And and some of what we're doing is a response to listening to lots of people's input. Um, but the data and the research is really clear on market research for exit poll uh polling for any election that has a referendum in it. And the lowest demographic of voters for a a school referendum are parents of school-aged children. Right? So it's a ironic thing, but that's, you know, what the the data and research clearly says. Okay. All right, I, you know, I think we just keep plugging away and democracy will prevail, and whatever the people people say will happen.
We got a month.
There you go.
All right, stop. Thank you. Is there any other questions for Ben?
Was there a a mailer that the vote yes committee put out? No.
This was one that went from the district right to every resident of, but it's called yes, has that one out?
No.
I don't think there's any.
There.
Okay.
Uh, is there any questions? Any more questions? All right, move on to the first reading of policy.
So, just a couple of highlights. Um, the four ninety-eight was brought with that had gone, I think, even to finance and then back because there were changes in the wages um of subs and then language um also to match the contract PTO language. So um, that's all in there. Take a look at that. Um, MSBA seven oh one point one, we do not have that policy, and the stuff that's in there is covered in other policies we have, so that one um will not be there or will not will not be adapted. And then down um seven oh five, we talked a little bit about investments and how the board can view what the district investments are, and it, there is a total in the treasurer's report. But if the board is interested in more specifics about investments, Michelle could.
Yeah, um, with the treasurer's report, maybe should not be including in the future uh the list that comes from PME to us. So it'll just be a basic list of it.
All right, that's all. If anyone has questions.
Sorry, questions for Sue on policy? Thank you, Sue. All right, let's move on to school board goals. We need to try to hammer out these these goals for the school board, guys. Right? Collaborate.
Um, then we need the last set of goals. We gotta do more.
That was last year's.
Oh.
Come on, Eric.
New goals.
Need goals every year. I just like you taught me this back in middle school. You gotta find turnbowl, short term. Um, yes, we have to hammer out, we should probably try to get two to three goals, I think. What do people feel? Two, three goals? Is that good? Do you feel all right about that?
One or two.
I like you, Jim.
Thank you. All right, I'll 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 say, oh, here's a goal. We had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about masks. We all have different differences of opinions on masks. But when we had this conversation, everyone treated each other with respect and kindness, tired pride. And my, our goal should be that we continue to to work together as a cohesive unit to treat each other even though we may differ. That.
It's nice that we're able to have adult conversations and not
Without screaming and fighting.
With each other. Communication, um, yeah. Exactly. How do people feel about that? Ben, were you gonna say?
Well, I I, well, let's just acknowledge that we 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 did spend about an hour at a work session. And uh, we we really spun our wheels a lot, and we and we didn't really come up with anything. And but I do think that there was some, a couple of themes that came up, and I think the big one was communication. And I wonder if, you know, we had a a goal but within that goal, we almost had, you know, those, you know, subsets, if you will, you know, kind of um, the the how the board interacts um with each other to do their work. How the board interacts with the public, you know, to inform and find new opportunities new and different ways to inform the public. And 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 then the opposite of that, you know, increase opportunities you know, to get input from the community. But it all, it really all falls falls under communication. And, you know, almost like a uh, there's a document that I put together. I I just talked, I, this is how I phrased it, and I was, we probably need some wordsmithing, but I just indicated I've increased the board's engagement with the community. Um. We and and we could say anti choke, right? But I I did put in parentheses, one of our continuous improvement plans desired outcomes. And I thought that this captured the essence of what we're talking about. And it says, utilize best practice in governance by building systems for two-way communication based on positivity, trust, respect, and transparency. And, you know, I don't think that we need to look too much farther than our already existing continuous improvement plan desired outcome to capture some of the things that we're talking about. Now, you could get To capture some of the things that we're talking about, now you could get, we could. Like I kind of have it laid out where you could have like an A, B, and C or, you know. But I, but I like what you said, Eric, about, you know, continuing, and I think that is best practice. You know, and it's us having a level of civil discourse. To be able to engage in discussions, share opinions openly. Support what we say, but be able to disagree and do that in a, in a respectful manner.
Do we need a workshop just to work on this?
We tried, yeah.
I mean, I, I personally don't see a lot of conflict when we have board meetings. I personally don't see a lot of disrespect shown to anyone.
Right, I think, so on our last uh self survey we did, when was that, March?
Board evaluation.
The board evaluation. One of the things that the board evaluation kind of told us is that. We need to work on communication.
Yeah.
And. I think that we probably all agree that we communicate really well as a, like Ben does a great job communicating on a board's behalf to the public. I think the communication part needs to be a little bit better amongst us. Maybe not necessarily at a meeting, but, you know, like calling you on a Wednesday or whatever, just checking in. Like, we just need to kind of touch base a little bit more, I think. One-on-one outside of the board setting. Um. I think that's more of along the lines of where we, where we were. Going with that, because I think, I, I really don't think we can communicate anymore, Ben can communicate anymore. Than he already does for us, and. I should have said, I'm not gonna be putting out a, a article every week or every month on Union Times, um, I don't even know what I would say. But.
Well, I like what you put together here. This, I like this, I mean, I think. Um, because you then added, see, continue to work collaboratively at the board, I.
We can add like Birdsmith that a little bit more, you know.
I think that does cover the essence, but Chad also talked about what you did, Eric, about more.
Yeah, that's, she has, a lot of chats I knew was, you know, like, go and have coffee or something, just a little one at one time.
Easy to do, just set up a rotation.
Right.
You know, I think it'd be beneficial for all. Be a way to communicate and see what's on your mind. Have your agree to disagreement during your conversation, so I think everyone here can probably say they would do that. So, uh, I think it would be. Next.
Are you saying like, we'd meet with you, Eric?
No, it's just like you might meet with Dev or, I mean, Sue and Chad or me and Sue or me and Eric, whatever, just. Any one of us just meet up and so we start communicating outside of the boardroom.
Well, it's all good and all, but we also would need, would need to work, move cautiously toward it, because, yeah, I mean. Because, you know, you, you.
You can talk about whatever the heck you want, if it's with true people.
Right, yeah, but it, but once you, once you get another person and, and then if it's, if it's, you know.
A change.
If we get into a bunch of lobbying for a position, trying to. You know, I get you, that's a little tricky too.
I think it's more about just, like. Just being friendly, I guess, not even, you don't even have to be talking about schools, just. We're not. We have a pretty, pretty good board situation going right now, and it'd be nice to try to keep this nice, friendly board situation, we're not. At odds with each other. I don't know.
Well, you know.
Seem to care about each other too, which is nice, because you don't have all board, all boards are not like that.
Well, yeah, and usually when we do vote, it's unanimous.
Well, yeah, it doesn't have to be, but we all, we all care about each other, you know, we're not.
We try to reason things out during the discussion. And we try to come up with the solution that, that's best, and I, I can't recall when there's really been any. No. You know, to, to take away from the unanimity of that. Of the vote.
Doesn't that sort of follow in number C or in part C, continue to work collaboratively as a board? I mean, outside of that, we could continue to network with each other.
You know, if I was gonna add to that, I, you know, I, I think I would say collaboratively aboard, as a board within. Uh, agreed upon norms or something. And I don't know, like, when we, when we have our professional learning communities, I, I still just drop from that. We try and utilize best practices and how you work together with a group of people, right, and you think that'd be easy. But it's really not, you have to try to use best practices and one of the, one of the very first things you do. You develop norms of behavior, like what do we all expect of each other? You know, to, uh. And, and you kind of agree to those, and that might, you know, that might not be a bad thing for us to create. As a board, that could potentially be an action plan, like what are our norms of behavior as a board?
Could that be the second goal?
We've done that with negotiations.
Yeah.
That'd be a good goal.
Well, I, I think that the tricky thing is, is, you know, we, we've started to do board, really intense board evaluations. And this board has made a tremendous amount of progress, I, I think, in kind of continually improving. And, uh, and we've heard it through the, the people from the Minnesota School Boards Association that come in and evaluate with us, I mean. More than one time that we have a really high functioning board. And I think one thing that we, you know, I think we want to start keep pushing ourselves to that next level, which is good. But you don't wanna, you don't, you don't wanna like create things. That you don't need to, that might actually disrupt the growth that you've made. Either, so you just, I want to be careful with that.
Inventing problems.
It went, and I want to remind the board that, uh. You know, we're not voting on this tonight, this would have to be a, you know, a future.
Well, I think we got one goal, I haven't, no, Jim said we only need two, so.
Well, no, just wait a second. Yeah, that goal, that one goal actually has three goals in it, so I mean, I can, I can write it to where we, we break that into three goals, you're talking about. Provide additional opportunities to inform the public. On the role of the board and, you know, and the budget, because I think that was a kind of a, the informational piece. Um. It, it, and then there was this whole idea of provide opportunities for the public to provide more input. Right, and then you have this whole continue to work collaboratively within a, an agreed set of norms, whatever, and we would. Those are goals, but then you'd have to say, well, what are we gonna do to accomplish that? You know, and it's a little trick, and we just have to look at the reality of what we face. Is we have opportunities for the public to communicate with you two times a month. Most school boards in around the state have one meeting.
Most emails.
You have two.
Yeah.
Our emails and our cell phones.
Yeah.
So, I mean, okay, so like, we have to, what are some additional things that we're not currently doing to allow for? That. Oh, I mean, it, it, and there probably are some things we just need to, to think through. You guys want to ponder what we had talked about, maybe, and. And then you have an opportunity to provide input to me and then I can make some changes and then we'll be ready to vote on it at next meeting.
Do you wanna, like, have a one-on-one discussion, Eric, uh, among, among us to see? What we're doing, or do you want to have coffee things between?
No, if we.
I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't know, if we wanna, if we wanna think, if, if you think that we need to add something to here, you know, we can email. Email me or email Ben or call me or whatever. I don't know.
Oh, I just don't see any problems for the most part. And how we get along. Treat each other with respect.
All right, you know, I think that we could. Kick this around for a little bit and maybe clean it up a little bit and. Possibly vote on it at the next meeting, uh, work session in October.
If, if, if the board, I did refresh your inbox with the evaluation report that we received from MSBN, our evaluation. And, you know, there was a lot of like, continue doing something in there that I was reading, so we were doing it, so it wouldn't make any sense for us to have a goal. That we're already doing pretty well. But, you know, there was a theme, I think it was on communication that would come up and it was on a, a different topics. You know, so, and I think at the end of the day, it's always, it's always about communication, I think. That there is something that we just need to rect. We need to just have an open discussion. About, you know, the, the board being comfortable with the superintendent as your CEO to communicate on your behalf. Versus what you, what do you feel like the board needs to communicate outside of that superintendent? Right, because I do all kinds of communicating on your behalf, and that means you're communicating, right? Um, yes. So I, I just think we need to, uh. We need to just openly discuss, like, where's the line there?
We need to remember the model that we're, the governance model that we're. We're trying to run here and we're letting you communicate for us, I think that's what we want.
Do we need to align the board's goals with the superintendent's goals? Or is that pretty much?
Well.
Taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, at, to this point, um, I'm, I, I was waiting for the board to get their, their goals set, so then I would. You know, I would set mine. Um. And, you know, I, I think that shortly after the board votes on this, then. I will set mine and you guys can give me input on that. I do think it's important to have our continuous improvement plan and our, and our mission and vision. Aligned with the board goals and aligned with the superintendent goals.
There was something else about continuous, getting continuous updates on student performance. I know that really hasn't been, has that been done? Were you kind of looking for more, like every second month, getting updates on student?
We did a lot of, I know.
At our last meeting, we get.
Yeah, the school updates from the principals, yes.
And now next, you know, next meeting, we'll have two or three more schools. You'll be getting updates from student achievement from schools at every work session for the next. Few weeks, few, few months.
Yeah.
Three to four months.
Okay. You gotta remember that we were coming out of COVID, which was really, last year was just a different year. You know, we, we didn't receive the, the, the normal updates that we would get, um. The, the kids weren't in school in person, it was, it was tough for everyone, so.
And was zooming, that was awkward too.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we're actually, right now, we're getting back to normal, getting back on track to where we were before COVID.
Well, and I, I just want to remind everybody even with that, that statement.
Totally.
That. Um, there was many school districts across our country that didn't have their children in school for. Over a year, almost sixteen months. And there was many school districts in the state of Minnesota that didn't have their children in school for almost a whole year. And here in Princeton, we had our kids in school.
Through traffic.
Almost the, well, up, up until there was about a two-month break where we had to, we had to, you know, get readjusted, but we were in school. You know, and we're still in school.
And we're thankful for that.
Yeah.
Very thankful.
I think the kids are very thankful for that.
I think so too.
Teachers too. Yeah, it's hard on everyone. All right, well, let's move, move on from these goals and go on to the action. Jason and step out. We are right, um. You guys wanna? Move on to set the special meeting, or you wanna approve the?
I'm going to accept the twenty-one, twenty-three fair professional contract.
All right, we have a motion to accept the fair professional contract as presented, and a second by, uh, motion by Eric Minks and second by Chad.
And just so the board knows, you had an opportunity to review this and, uh, the find, the school board finance committee had a full briefing on this at their committee.
Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none, uh, we'll, we'll, I will call Chad.
Yes.
Yes. Eric Minks?
Yes.
Eric Stramberg, yes, Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
All right, the contract is approved, now we need to set a special meeting. Uh, for the, um, test court mediation. When did she want to do that? Next week sometime?
Just wait. Okay, what she's got is I could do afternoon slash evening on Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, and of course, we won't on Friday, because. We don't like Friday, so Wednesday or Thursday.
This week?
Next week.
On next week?
Wednesday would work for me because we have agenda planning at three to four and then I have Facebook Live. At six, so.
Uh, could we do four o'clock?
I would, yeah, I think, if, if we can get board members here for me, but.
I was gonna do it for, right?
Well, would you be okay with that?
You want to hear what she has to say?
Yeah.
And it probably won't work for me either, so it just depends.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This is next Wednesday?
Yes.
Well, it's just to hear what she's got to say, so, I mean, it's not like.
Yeah, we're not.
It's not a decision or a vote. It'd be good for everybody here, I think.
Did you want, did you say two today, too?
There's Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, and she said if we absolutely can't come up.
I can do one.
We can do ten nineteen, the night before, ten twenty-eight.
You can do next Wednesday.
We can do Wednesday after three. What time are you saying then?
I said four.
I can do that.
It's all our three thirty, we can get done with the agenda planning. Or what we want to be.
All right.
Depends how much Eric likes to talk, he's a big talker.
Me.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not available.
At all, I think. Oh, okay.
But any of those days. I'm not gonna come, come by for.
Can we zoom in from the combo?
Can we have a meeting with all you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Can we zoom?
Yeah, if you wanna zoom in, zoom in. Then I'll maybe try. Yeah.
What if it's raining? I just said ask.
If it's raining, then I can be here.
Then you were. You'll be able to zoom?
Yeah, at four or at any time after four.
Can we make a Zoom option?
Sure.
Is that available?
Yeah, we can make it available whenever we want to make it available.
I think, you know, we, we, we're making an effort to be here in person, but this is a special meeting that was. Just kind of, we gotta throw it together, so.
Yeah, I can come in person, if we could throw a Zoom link out there for the people that would want to zoom.
Is she gonna Zoom or is she gonna come?
I think she was planning on coming personally.
I think I'm personally.
I can come personally. We could throw out a Zoom link for you guys a few days longer.
Just mute it.
Okay, are we going Wednesday at four?
Wednesday at four?
Wednesday at four.
Wednesday at four.
You'll send out an email?
Thirteenth.
Uh, is it, yeah, that's the thirteenth.
And, and just so you know, it's a closed session.
My son's birthday.
So it's like, we'll have to go, you know, go in a closed session immediately.
Some nights in Texas.
I know the other one. Travelers.
All right, we're good, everyone good at that? All right, there's no additions to the agenda. Uh, future meetings are there, pencil in at four o'clock next, uh. Wednesday, October thirteenth. We have a motion for adjournment. Motion made by Jim, second by Eric Stramberg. On favor?
Hi.